I would like to call this Village Board Meeting of Thursday, March 7, 2024, to order. Mayor Clerk Schmidt, please take the rose.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Maritato.
Here.
Trustee Tojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a quick statement. I just wanted to send out our heartfelt sorrows to the Severino family. Earlier this week, Roberta Severino, also known as Bobby, who all love her, had passed away. Bobby is the beloved wife of Frank Severino, the mayor, Carol Stream, who's also a good friend of mine and a very good friend of the board here in Glendale Heights. We just want to take a moment, Frank, and send out our heartfelt sorrows to you and your family. Please keep Severino family in your thoughts, please, and thank you.
Come in, Chief. Trustee Schmidt.
Starting in mid-March, the Village of Glendale Heights will be resurfacing West Fullerton Avenue from Schmal Road to Bloomingdale Road. This work will include roadway resurfacing, sidewalk incurred improvements, storm sewer repairs, and pavement marking replacement. This project is anticipated to be completed in late June, and there may be parking restrictions during this timeframe. The general contractor for this project is K-5 Construction Corporation, with oversight by Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited. If you have any questions, please contact the project engineer, Andrew Borke, at (224) 500-0019. Join the Village of Glendale Heights team. We are now hiring for a variety of positions at the GH-2O Aquatic Center and the Sports Hub, ranging from lifeguard to youth program counselor. Stop by the Sports Hub on Saturday, March 16, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., or Wednesday, March 20, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for our job fair with on-spot interviews and job offers. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org.
Trustee. Before I do the announcement, I want to recognize a brave soul who is not among us, and I also want to observe a moment of silence. On February 25, 2024, at approximately 12:58 p.m. local time, Bushnell, dressed in military fatigue, approached the Israeli Embassy in Washington, DC, intending to emulate himself as an act of protest against the war in Gaza. Mr. Bushnell's last words were, "My name is Aaron Bushnell. I'm an active-duty member of U.S. Air Force, and I will no longer be complicit in genocide. I am about to engage in an extreme act of protest, but compared to what people in Palestine have been experiencing at the hands of their colonizers. It's not extreme at all. This is what our ruling class has decided will be normal: free Palestine." Those are very strong words, and it shook me to the core when I saw that video in the morning. So I just have a moment of silence for Mr. Bushnell. Rest in peace. Thank you. Are you interested in gardening, flowers, and greenery? Look no further than the Glendale Heights Garden Club. On the first Wednesday of each month at 7:00 p.m., come by Sports Hub and join other gardening enthusiasts to learn about gardening. Make new friends, share tips, watch our community bloom this spring. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Register today for Village's new e-newsletter. On the first day of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead with news from the Village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the Village website at glendalehighs.org. If you have any questions, please contact the Village Public Relation Division at (630) 909-5350.
Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. Glendale Heights Police Department and the Village of Glendale Heights want you to always remember, if you see something, say something. Although we do our best to be out in the community, we cannot be everywhere at once. This is why we rely upon you, the residents of Glendale Heights, to let us know what's happening. If you see something that is suspicious, please do not hesitate to call 911 and let an officer investigate the matter. If you have any questions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070, and not put it out on Facebook because you're not going to get a very good response with that.
Clerk Schmidt, please.
Daylight savings time begins Sunday, March 10, at 2:00 a.m. Please remember to turn your clocks forward for one hour. Also during this time, please remember to change the batteries in all of your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors when you change your clocks. The next coffee and chat with the Village President and Board will be Saturday, April 6, at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend or have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Village President or Village Board, please call the Village President's office anytime at (630) 909-5302 or your trustee.
Trustee Maritato.
Join us for the annual Safety Town Easter egg hunt hosted by the Glendale Heights Police Department. Children ages 8 and under are invited to join us on Saturday, March 23, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for our annual Easter egg hunt. Pre-registration for a time slot is required and is available at the Village's website. For more information on the Safety Town Easter egg hunt and to pre-register, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459. Okay. Hop on over on Saturday, March 23, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens for our annual breakfast with the Easter Bunny. And all-you-can-eat pancake breakfasts will be served, including sausage and beverage. Photos with the Easter Bunny will also be available. No pre-registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Adult breakfasts cost $5. Children breakfasts cost $3. And pictures are $3. For more information, call (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Tojek, please.
Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Thursday of every month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from local source vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Trustee Schroeder.
Senior citizens age 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines, which are: You must be age 65 or better on or before December 31, 2023, or have a spouse who is age 65. You must have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2023 as either an owner or renter, and you must have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2023, and have utility bills billed and paid in their name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30. And if you have any questions, please contact the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-656050, or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have the following proclamation: A proclamation to proclaim the month of March as Poison Preservation Month, Prevention Month. If there are no objections, I will sign this proclamation. Any objection? No. Next is a presentation by Gary Doob of Tyler Technologies on the Munis Enterprises Resources Planning Software System.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Mayor, while they're getting that set up, I just want to welcome Gary and John from Tyler Technologies. They'll be giving you a quick overview of the Munis Financial Management Software that the Finance Department is hoping to have the board consider in the current budget and then ongoing in the subsequent budget. You can see that, as you watch the presentation, Munis is just not for the finance people. Munis is really an application for the residents of the community, first and foremost. It will also allow for information for elected officials to access that they've not been accessed before and much easily, much more easily. This will give residents a centralized location to see property information and to interact with you as elected officials. And it will give our residents the tools to better manage their utility account, which, as most of you know, the utility billing account is in need of a lot of help. So you'll see tonight, the software is way beyond in its capability. What we have currently, the software that we currently use, was purchased in 1999. 1999. Still in use today. So, no ado, please turn it over to Gary Doobie and John White. They're from Tyler Technologies.
Before you do that, I have a quick question. How we decide that we are going to pick them? Did we issue an RFP or anything?
So, we did a search of surrounding municipalities, and most of our neighbors have Munis, Tyler Technologies already. There are a couple that have a product called BS and ESN-A, which is another financial software. And there are a couple stragglers that have Central Square Software. All of these software systems, Trustee Siddiqui, are on a cooperative contract. So the bidding has really already been taking place.
Bidding taking place by... Like, which companies took place, took part in those? I mean, my question is, do we have... Like, did we send an RFP or... Because the other, you know, village selected this doesn't mean that it's going to fit us because we don't know, you know, how big or how small and, you know... So I'm just trying to understand who picked them and how it was picked.
So, all of the vendors that are in this space would have had an opportunity to provide a response to an RFP. The village did not issue the RFP. It would have been a governmental, federal, or state-type contract arrangement. Am I saying that the right way?
So, the Finance Department, though, has vetted all the... There's only two or three businesses that do this in this space. The Finance Department's experienced with those products and vetted this product to be the best need for the village. The village buys this software off a state contract. So the pricing is state-contract pricing. So we get the best price no matter what because it comes off a state contract.
And Gary and John will show you why we feel that this software is best suited to meet the needs of the village, now and in the future.
Thank you, Bill. I'd like to thank the Village Board for providing us the opportunity to come in and speak with you today. If you haven't noticed by my lack of an accent, I am not from the Midwest. John and I are from the state of Maine, which is where the headquarters for this product is located. So again, my name is Gary Doobie. I've been with the company 31 years. John's been with the company 25 years. And we're going to present to you today Tyler ERP powered by Munis. ERP is a fancy acronym for Financial Management Software and Resident Software. 2,300 municipalities across the U.S. use this software. And we've converted from your current software to the Munis software about 140 cities. So we're very familiar with your system. So this is the current environment that the village is using. The software was acquired in 1999, a cost of $1 million. Approximately $1.8 million in today's value. As you can see, it's pretty old-looking. It's not intuitive, difficult to learn, difficult to use. There are no, what we know today as apps. There's no ability to use your mobile phone. There is no alerts, very paper-intensive. There's no ability to see water leaks that the citizens are using. Cannot turn off the paper bill.
They're not holding that.
So there are many disadvantages. If you want to take a look at today's software, this is what we are providing. This is the software used by, again, 2,300 municipalities. And each user can have their unique dashboard that you see here, with all the information served up to them without the need to go and search and find information. Our organization is very focused. We focus exclusively on the public sector. So all we do is software and related services for cities, counties, and schools. We have public safety software, courts and justice software, permits and code enforcement software. And today, we're going to show you the Financial Management and Resident Access software. Anyway, you want to measure our organization, we are very, very successful and very, very strong. We've had 22 consecutive profitable years. We're a public company, so any information you want to know about our organization is readily available. And most importantly here is 83% of our revenue is recurring, which really leads to our organizational stability. As Bill mentioned, we have you very well surrounded. We have about 60 clients using this software here in the state. We have a very active user group. And we've been delivering our software to municipalities in the state for 30 years. So you can see that we have you very well surrounded with Naperville, Joliet, Glendale, and Wooddale, et cetera. The software is very current technologically. You can use any browser. We have a lot of ability to use mobile apps, so you can access the software from a phone or a tablet. Citizens will have an app as well. The software would be hosted by Amazon Web Services. And our approach is much different than your current software vendor, obviously. If you take a look at the top screen, that software was developed about 20 years ago. Every year, we have a functional release, and every few years, we have a technological release. And that's what you're looking at here. As we've... Technology has improved. We've added that technology to our software, and we roll that out to all 2,300 customers. And we've already begun to take advantage of artificial intelligence in our programs. Munis is part of an ecosystem that includes asset maintenance as well as civic services, permits and code enforcements. But what we're going to show you today is the Resident Access. So the ability for residents to have an app, to get online, to pay bills, to look up their bill, to get notifications of water leaks, pay online. We can mass notify citizens via email and text. And then on the right side is the financial applications, your general ledger, your budgeting, purchasing, fixed assets, et cetera. We intend to deliver 140 days of training. So John is going to show you the Resident Access portal, so the ability to, again, get online and look up business licenses, utility bills, miscellaneous payments. We'll show you the citizens' mobile app, which is basically Village Hall in your pocket, and the ability for citizens to communicate with the village. We'll show you applications designed really specifically for board members such as yourself, where key performance indicators will be pushed out to your cell phone or to your tablet, if you choose. And the vendors have the ability to get online, look up their bills, look up their checks, look up their purchase orders. We have an Open Finance portal where you can publish to your website financial data, and citizens can actually access this information, which really decrease the amount of FOIA requests that you receive. And with that, I'll introduce, reintroduce John.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is John White, and for the record, my address is Tyler Technologies, 1 Tyler Drive, Yarmouth, Maine, 04106. So I'm going to begin first with the citizen-facing apps. And I'm going to start with the mobile app that the citizens will be able to download to their iPhone or to their Android tablet. So let me share my iPad with you. So I typically show this from the iPad as opposed to my iPhone, solely so that inappropriate text messages don't pop up during these live demonstrations. So I'm going to just fire this off. This is the application. This background image of the church can be swapped out into something more fitting for the village. If you're old enough to remember the old rotary phones, the menuing system is just like the dial on those rotary phones. As Gary alluded to, this essentially puts Village Hall into your pocket or purse. So first off, I can come in and report... Wrong thing there. Report an issue. Okay. So this will give the user a list of all the different things they can complain about. So missing street signs, traffic signs, code enforcement issues. I'm just going to drop down to the traffic sign issue. I can remain anonymous if I choose to, by not filling anything in here. I can pick what type of sign I am communicating to the village, and I'll go with the stop sign. And then this sits on top of your GIS. So it will actually drop the map. It'll show you exactly where you are presently. So it'll use location services on the device, so you can pick that address. And then it will also allow you to use the camera on the phone to take pictures of exactly what you're witnessing. So all of that will be packaged together and then sent up to the Public Works Department or to the Code Enforcement Office, so they can deal with the situation and ultimately remediate it. No other things that are here that the citizens can take advantage of. If I jump over to news, there is a push messaging system. So anyone with the app, the village will be able to push messages out to the citizenry whenever things are happening. So rather than bombarding 911 on July 4 at what time the fireworks are going off, you can just push that message out to everyone in bulk. And then on your social, not your social media, but your public cable access, all the videos, et cetera, can be posted here. So whenever I get a free moment, I can come in and look at any of the content that they have produced. From the governmental arena, all the elected officials can be here. I can pick on anyone. I can call them from here. I can email them and then see a brief biography. And then I will be able to plug in your cloud permit software here, so I can apply for a permit. I can pay my utility bill. I can sign up my children for any kind of parks and rec event, all from the comfort of this app. Because obviously, today, the cell phone is the device of choice for most people, and so all that functionality is embedded right here. So I'll put this away. And I'm going to jump over to your webpage. And the next place I'm going to go is to the Transparency Portal, which gives the citizens access to the financial data directly. So from your webpage, we'll install a link to Open Finance. And this will present the different aspects of your financials, from the revenue side, the expense side, the vendor payments. The payroll information is zero here just because payroll and HR was not part of this procurement. So I left that out of the equation. So we'll jump over to the expense side. And this will present, in this case, it's thermometer-style presentation, what your spending is. So the gray or the purple bar represents the budget, and the blue mercury inside the thermometer represents your spend thus far this year. Now, you can come in and switch your fiscal year on demand, so you can jump back to any given year. And you can also organize the data by any of the dimensions of the chart of accounts that the village sets up. So I continue to navigate into the city here. I'll go into the General Fund. I'm going to pick on Public Safety. And we'll jump right into the Police Department and get a breakdown of what they're spending money on, between salaries, services, goods. We'll go into Services here and see the breakdown of legal services versus contractual services, et cetera. Over on the far left are your breadcrumbs, so you can jump back to any prior screen just by clicking on that circle. Now, if you're more inclined to the pie chart presentation, you can change it on demand, so you can go to pie chart, or you can look at the data over time. So that's your spend over the course of years. And then we can pick legal services versus travel versus mileage, all presented here. Now, as I scroll to the bottom of the screen, Gary alluded to the FOIA requests. So very often, this financial data gets FOIA'd. The citizens will be able to download this directly. So I can go into View and Download, and I can dump any of this data directly into Excel spreadsheets that I find desirable. And then I can slice, dice, graph, chart to whatever I want with the raw information. Continuing on, we'll jump over into Resident Access. So this is where the citizens can come in and look up their receivables, the things they owe. They can also apply for permits. So we'll be able to connect your cloud permit software directly into this framework as well. So I'm going to jump over to Utility Access. In this case, I am using a login, so I'm going to log in as a user or a hypothetical resident of the village. And I'm running this on a MiFi on this device, so it is a little bit sluggish, as you can see. So any individual can tie themselves to as many properties in the village as they desire, as long as they know the access codes. So in my case, Sheila is a large property owner in my fictitious little world here, showing us a number of different properties. So I can come in. First off, I can view my bills. So rather than having this, if I lose my bill or I can't find it, I'll be able to come in and see the bill, the complete breakdown, the flow history on my account, and then the coupon to tear off and return with my payment back to the Village Finance Department. Moving across, the account detail will show me all the services that are on my account. So in this case, I believe you're a five-service biller. You have water, you have sewer, you have a water delivery fee, a capital debt, and a capital infrastructure. So those are all present. Transactions. It's a reverse chronological list. Every time a bill has been paid or bill has gone out and a payment has been made, so I can see all the activity on my account. And then finally, on the consumption, this makes use of your Neptune AMI reading system. So in this case, the Neptune AMI readers are collecting readings from each of your meters 24 times a day, once an hour. So the citizens will be able to come in. Obviously, you can look at your monthly flow as to what the bill was. You can look at it daily. And this red line is basically your evapotranspiration line. It shows what the temperature was in that day, as well as what the rainfall, so you can see if your water consumption is coincident with the weather. You can look at the hourly reads and see exactly what you've been using hour by hour, and then any kind of custom presentation. You can view this from a cost or a usage perspective. And there is an alert function here, so you can sign up for email, voice, or text alerts. You can have the system warn you whenever it detects a leak. You can have the system warn you whenever you cross a specific billing threshold, so whether that be dollars or flow. And there's also a vacation threshold alert. So you can tell the system when you're away, and if it sees flow on your meter, it will generate a warning to you. So if your washing machine hose breaks, you don't come back from your vacation with a flood in the house. So all of that, the citizens will be able to do directly through this application. Now, for the Board as well as the executive staff, we'll jump over to Executive Insights. So all the information that's bubbling in this underlying ERP system, we serve up to the we serve up to the executive staff as well as the trustees in a series of easily digestible tiles that you see here. So I can see cash and fund balances, exactly where the village stands financially. If I jump over to budget and expenditures, what my various spending plans have been. Now, all of these can be ribbonized with standard traffic signal symbology, where green is good, yellow is cautionary, red is bad. So my eyes can be drawn to the ones that need managerial attention. So I'm not living up to paying my invoices in a timely fashion. I can see my revenues, so property taxes, utility bills, sales taxes, lodging taxes over the course of time. And then finally, on the utility side, what the revenue has been, the collections, and what the total usage has been over that point. Now, if I jump back to the cash and fund balance, these are all actionable. So it's not just surface information that you're looking here. Let's punch into cash balance. Now, right now, this is looking at the year of twenty-three. You can switch your year. So you can go and filter this on any different date range. I'm going to switch my date range to oh seven oh one twenty twenty-three to oh six thirty twenty twenty-four. So basically, the July to June fiscal year. So this will show me what that period of time looks like. Now, baked into this is the projection capability. So you can map out what the future will hold. And when you click projections, you can do a linear projection, which will basically just cascade out the slope of the line into the future. You can do historical. So that will take all of the historical data that you've accumulated in the software and extrapolate out what the future should look like, so where you'll land on fiscal year end. And we also support the Profit. Profit is the Facebook slash meta modeling tool that will cast the data, put a slightly different spin on things, a little bit more seasonality built into the data, and that just paints a different perspective. So with that, I'll stop there, open up for any kind of questions from the audience.
Yes.
Why don't we do the board first? Well, just do the board.
Okay, quick question. Phil would probably be able to answer. You might be able to answer too, John. Our payment system that we have for paying our water bill has been a huge source of anxiety for some. Will this change, modify, or bring a much better system?
Yes, so you'll be able to pay with a credit card or an e-check. And then we broker all of the payment transactions. So we're the underlying merchant for those. So it is all completely integrated. When a payment comes in through the web portal, the back office system is updated immediately. Your spouse could call and finance would tell you the payment was just made through the web.
Trusty Siddiqui, then trusty Shroder.
You mentioned payroll and HR are not a part of this. So do you guys offer payroll and HR as well?
Yes, we do.
And is this a separate pricing or is it included in, in your, you know?
I need help on that.
So everything you've seen today is a module and payroll, human resources is a separate module. The village uses a service bureau today for your payroll. If you were to bring that in-house, then you could utilize the Tyler ERP units payroll system.
Okay, I believe we use Paycom, correct, for payroll?
Yes.
So, and I think we are paying how much? Is it like two hundred thousand a year subscription?
Just south of two hundred thousand dollars.
Two hundred thousand?
Yes, but it's a, it's a turnkey system.
Per year, correct?
Yes.
Two thousand, two hundred thousand. And so can we look at their pricing and we can see if we can, because that's... I want to even have a one system in which, you know, all the modules or all the systems talks to each other versus two separate system.
We can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, since they also provide. And my other question is, data privacy is a very important issue. And nowadays, there is a breach of data and all that stuff. So how you guys, what's your plan on that? Where you save your data and what kind of authentication system you use?
I have a, I have a slide about that. Okay, so all the data is stored in Amazon. So we use Amazon Web Services. So our client identity provider, you can use anything that you want. Our preferred one is Okta, so that will do multi-factor authentication. All data in transit between the village and the AWS cloud is encrypted. All data within the AWS cloud is encrypted at rest as well. And then we are, we're subject to a SOC one and SOC two audit every single year. And we're also subject to a PCI audit every year.
Okay, and do you, at the time of breach or if there is any incident of breach, what kind of assurances you have for us that, you know, or what kind of step you guys take? Or does it ever happen that, is there any breach on your data?
The client data is never breached.
Never been, okay, that's good. And what kind of plan you have? Do you have any, any plan for that? Like at the time of, you know, if there is any incident where the data is breached, what kind of, you know, actions you guys take right away?
Do you have any answer for that? I don't. We'd have to get back to?
I don't need the answer right now, but yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Trusty Shroder, please, then trusty Pojak, after that.
No, I don't have my hand.
Okay, trusty Pojak.
How will this, how are old records going to be handled? Are they going to be integrated with the new system or how's, how you're going to do that?
Right, so part of the contract is for us to convert all of your historical data into the new system, going back X years. I don't know how many years you bargained for, five, ten? Five years? So five years back.
How will that be handled?
Programmatically. So we have a team of people that take the data from the central square system and massage it in two hours.
Is there any more? Bill, is there any information you give us to the trustees so we can, you know, look, review all this?
Certainly provide you as much information as you would like.
We need some hard copies.
Of course.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And the pricing too, like, you know, what would be done?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, yes, Mr. Berg.
If, if this system goes down, is there some kind of a backup?
We have redundancy, yes. So if your internet service is down, typically people will get a backup internet provider. So if one is down, you can fall over to the other one and still have connections. If you had a widespread electrical outage here with no generator, there would, there would be no way to connect to it. You'd be, you'd be out.
Trusty Shroder, please.
Thank you.
For those residents who are landlords or property owners, do you have the ability to go in and find out the status of their business licenses or rental license agreements with the Comdev?
So are you using those with the, the cloud permit software? Is all the business licenses stored in that software? Yes.
Yes, we'll be back direct.
So conceivably, we could connect an API to that. So you could look and see the status of all of those licenses. Was that proposed? No, but that was not proposed. Um, and? It's on a different system.
Anybody else? I have follow-up question, trusty Siddiqui, yes, you know, are you insured and bonded in case of breach occurs? You know, you said there was no incident, you know, in past, but it can happen.
Let us get back to you. I, I don't have an answer to that question.
Oh, okay. And other?
We, we do provide a service-level agreement with, you know, penalties should we not meet monthly uptime. And that's part of the agreement.
And other, we are getting services from Paycom. If we merge those services with you, can you give any estimate, you know, how much it will cost if we leave?
It would be significantly less than you're paying now.
Roughly approximate how much? Just estimate.
I would estimate about sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year.
That's almost sixty, sixty-five percent less. So we definitely need to look into that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just have a question. Bill, the existing bill, the existing system that you have right now, is it that difficult for you to work with? Is?
It's not that it's difficult for the staff to work with, trustee Shroder, because we're, I mean, we've obviously had it for a long time. What the frustration, quite frankly, is from the resident's perspective in, in not being able to give them information that they, that they really need. In today's environment, everything is online and we should be in a position to be able to respond to residents, especially with water bill information. And we're not really able to do that efficiently.
You say water billing information. Well, when a resident comes in, they really want to know what they owe or do they want that much more informa... I don't know.
They get, they get a high bill. For example, they normally use six thousand gallons and we bill them for twenty thousand gallons. And they bring the bill in and say, oh my goodness, Bill, what have you done to me? And currently, we have to go into a separate app to pull that information and explain to them, okay, well, you must have had a water leak. Here's the, we can give them the graph that shows them how much they had, how much water they used in a particular period of time so they can see for themselves. A good example would be that when the water bills are generated, we have an auto-pay setup inbuilt into the Navoline system. So a person can log into the site and with their credit card, they can pay their bill. Well, we have with Navoline what's called a blackout period, where for pretty much two weeks, a resident cannot go in and change credit card information, add a card. And that's extremely embarrassing, I'm sorry, to, for the village to be able to say, I'm sorry, you're not able to make a, a credit card change. We don't want their credit card information, trust me, but we want them to be able to be empowered to do that. But during this blackout period, they're not able to do that. And that's old technology.
It's old technology?
Nineteen ninety-nine old technology.
All right, thank you.
I'm glad you said that, Bill, because all the residents that call me, that tell me they can't pay the water bill online is a lot.
And we address these questions, I'll just, I just, I don't want to speak too much here. We address these questions directly with our central square regional representative, who changes pretty often, just about as much as the seasons do. And their answer is, well, we're not really committed to improving the product.
Bill, we have to increase our staff or reduce our staff?
No changes in staff, trustee Pojak, no changes.
None whatsoever?
No, sir.
Hmm, interesting.
I have one more question. For Paycom, you guys can convert those data to your ERP system, correct?
Correct.
You can do that. Okay. And when we are up with this Paycom, like what's their renewal date?
Peter, do you know?
I don't off the top of my head.
Off the top, we implemented back in September of twenty twenty-two. So it'd be probably somewhere in that neighborhood.
Okay. I'd really like to know about your HR and payroll as well included. And, you know, you can email me and you can, you know, let me know about that. I'm interested in that part as well. Thank you.
I'm, yes.
I have one more question, either for Gary or John. In the other companies' villages that use you guys, do you have an increase in the staff or did you reduce the staff because of your input, your program?
Staff usually stays the same, but people get reallocated to different jobs. They're not usually doing the same thing anymore.
Oh, okay.
Now, you said this is like two hundred thousand. Is that a yearly expense?
I believe that's the Paycom number. I think, that must be, that must be.
You want the Paycom?
That's Paycom. That's a separate area which we are paying just for HR and payroll.
Right.
That's only for, for that, we are paying two hundred thousand.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
But they said that they can do the same thing at around sixty, seventy. So it's almost like a hundred and thirty thousand we will be saving.
Well, we're not bogging down tonight.
No, no, we are not.
All right, we're not going to bog down. All right, thank you.
I don't think we can do the same, but.
Right. We'll, we'll make a comparison.
Make a comparison.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, go ahead. You have any question?
No.
No? Anybody else? Okay. We now move on to State of Village presentation.
Gary, John, thank you both.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
On behalf of the Village Board of Elected Officials and the Village of Glendale Heights, we are proud to present the two thousand twenty-three State of the Village Address as we highlight our many accomplishments over the past year. The village has great leadership with eight elected officials. Village President Chodre Makoker, Village Clerk Marie Schmidt, District One Trustee Bill Schmidt, District Two Trustee Mohammed Siddiqui, District Three Trustee Michael Light, District Four Trustee and Deputy Mayor Pat Meritato, District Five Trustee Chester Pojak, and District Six Trustee Mary Schroder. As we look back on two thousand twenty-three, we reflect on a very positive year with many new accomplishments and goals set forth by the Village Board. We are so proud of each and every staff member, committee and commission member, our many volunteers, and those individuals in our community who have made a difference each and every day. Glendale Heights is full of diversity, culture, equity, and truly a great place to call home. We are very proud of all of our accomplishments from two thousand twenty-three, but we wanted to take this time to highlight some of the key and important items from the past year as well as look forward into two thousand twenty-four and the years ahead. A complete breakdown of this past year with additional details is available in the full two thousand twenty-three State of the Village Address in the March-April Village Newsletter. In reviewing the audited results of operations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and comparing them to the previous year, the value of total village assets increased four percent or nine million dollars, rising to two hundred and twenty-one million from two hundred and twelve million. Total revenues declined slightly from sixty million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to fifty-eight million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, due primarily to a slowing economy and the transfer tax collected on the sale of a one thousand one hundred unit apartment complex in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Additionally, in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the village's general fund finished the year with a fund balance position of twenty-two point seven million dollars, exceeding both the level recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, and the amount established by village policy. A total of four point five seven million dollars in Federal American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds have been provided to the village. The Village Board has pledged one hundred percent of this money for water, sewer, and wastewater treatment infrastructure needs, which is one of the eligible uses for these funds. Residents will be pleased to know that for the second consecutive year, the two thousand twenty-three village tax levy contains no increase from the prior year. Overall, the village's share of property taxes amounts to slightly more than ten percent of the overall property tax burden. On June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, awarded the village with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for its two thousand twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFR. This is the fortieth year in a row that the village has received this award. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. On March sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the village was also recognized by the GFOA with a distinguished budget presentation award for its fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget document. This marks the tenth consecutive year in which the village has received this recognition. The Glendale Heights Police Department has a combined staff of a hundred and ten personnel, including fifty-seven sworn police officers, five part-time officers, four community service officers, records clerks, crossing guards, and an evidence officer. The department has a strong volunteer pool of eighteen members of the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency, or ESDA. In October, two thousand twenty-three, the Glendale Heights Police Department lost our canine Lobo due to complications from an emergency surgery. Lobo worked with Officer Jim Cahill for the past six years. The service and dedication Lobo provided our community was beyond reproach. Lobo will be missed by the members of our community, the law enforcement community, and members of the Glendale Heights Police Department. We are immensely proud of the Glendale Heights Police Department for maintaining the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, or CALEA, accreditation. The police department earned their first accreditation in two thousand eight and was most recently re-accredited for the sixth time in two thousand twenty-two. CALEA accreditation serves as a goal... CALEA accreditation serves as a gold standard for public safety agencies. Our police department is one of about eight hundred law enforcement agencies in the country who earn CALEA accreditation status. In two thousand twenty-three, officers have doubled the amount of foot patrols this year as compared to last year. With over two thousand foot patrols, officers enhance community relationships and interactions, strengthening our community policing efforts. This year, the police department deployed an additional seventeen flock license plate reader camera systems throughout the community to detect and capture evidence, input hot alerts for investigative leads, and receive real-time alerts on vehicles related to criminal actions. The police department now has twenty-seven flock cameras deployed throughout the community. Advancements in technology have provided an opportunity for officers to better serve our community while advancing these skills. Six officers are trained as drone operators. This allows the drone to be accessible during every patrol shift. Other specialty positions have also been implemented. These positions include two officers added to the problem-oriented, intelligence-led neighborhood team, or POINT. This newly established unit will concentrate on crime prevention and special investigations due to increased criminal activity. In addition, one more officer was added to the Commercial Motor Vehicle Safety and Enforcement Unit. One officer has been assigned as a general detective, and one civilian staff member was trained as a comfort dog handler. The police department also introduced a bloodhound unit to better serve our community in thanks to local cannabis dispensary Ivy Hall. This bloodhound unit will be utilized to track criminal suspects, persons with dementia, along with locating missing and runaway children. Our state-certified school resource officers spent the school year teaching drug abuse resistance education, or DARE, to fifth-grade students and addressing school-related concerns. There are three school resource officers, one for each district Glendale Heights children attend. They work to build student and police relationships, and they investigate police-related incidents within the schools. The police department is dedicated to its mission and working with the community to continue building relationships and trust. In two thousand twenty-three, the police department helped organize and participated in many events for all ages to continue to build relationships throughout the community. Events include the Polar Plunge, Cop on a Rooftop at our local Dunkin' Donuts, Autism Awareness Badges, Brittany's Trees, Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic, National Night Out, Cops and Bobbers Fishing Derby, Heroes and Helpers, and many others. Many of the fundraising events contributed to the Special Olympics Illinois and other community organizations and programs. The police department also organized a seasonal market in two thousand twenty-three, providing locally sourced food, produce, art, crafts, and more. The goal of these events is to bring the community together, both as vendors and as customers, increasing interaction and dialogue with our village residents. The police department increased the proactive initiative for mental health services through collaboration with Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services, or NEDFIS, to provide the highest quality of service for our residents. NEDFIS continues to do the co-responder bi-weekly in-person visits with officers along with overseeing over seven hundred service referrals. The police department's comfort dog Benjamin continued to provide support for our community members. Benjamin worked with the Glendale Heights community to bring comfort and calmness to those dealing with crisis, trauma, tragedy, and any other demanding situations. A major change in the Community Development Department in two thousand twenty-three, which will impact all of the following functions of the department, is the new enterprise resource planning software called Cloud Permit. Cloud Permit will allow the department to bring all departmental activities in a fully online and digitized environment. This will allow staff to retrieve information faster, resulting in improved workflow times and reduced expenditures for operational resources. Cloud Permit should be operational by mid-two thousand twenty-four. Economic development is critical to community health by promoting structured and orderly growth, improved shopping and dining offerings for village residents and visitors, and increased tax base through sales and property taxes, all of which contribute to improved property values for village residents and businesses. The department utilizes all available resources to include the management of seven tax increment financing, or TIF, districts to promote commerce and economic development within the village. In two thousand twenty-three, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted thirteen public hearings for various amendments to the zoning ordinance, planned unit developments, conditional uses, rezonings, and subdivision requests needed to support developmental and new business activity throughout the community. Notable cases include a forty-four thousand square foot building expansion for Sumitomo Drive Technologies, a twelve thousand square foot cannabis craft grower and infusion facility, and the redevelopment of an existing three thousand square foot commercial building into a multi-tenant center with a drive-through Jimmy John's restaurant. The village also welcomed sixty-seven new businesses in two thousand twenty-three that occupied a combined building area of approximately one point two million square feet of existing commercial, industrial, and office space that was either vacant or previously occupied. A selection of the new businesses include Clyde's Donuts, Vasa Fitness, Ivy Hall, Tony's Fresh Market, Northern Tool and Equipment, and Sud's Car Wash. The village has a pro-business posture. In two thousand twenty-three, the approach has resulted in full occupancy of the recently constructed business park developments at seven sixty East North Avenue and one East North Avenue with industrial businesses such as OMG Inc., DH Pace, Coda Resources, and Delmar International. Additionally, the Community Development Department worked with several property owners along the North Avenue corridor to remove several vacant buildings and structures in order to establish green fields for future redevelopment. In two thousand twenty-three, local road infrastructure was improved throughout the village as part of the in-house road program overlaying Paddock Circle, Clifford Street, Van Meter Drive, Newton Avenue, and Polo Club Drive. The project involved the removal and replacement of deteriorated and structurally damaged curbs and sidewalks along with base repairs to the roadway before the new asphalt surface layer was applied. The in-house road program undertook the repaving of over seven thousand square yards of surface roadway, replacement of two hundred linear feet of curb, and four thousand two hundred square feet of sidewalk. The Public Works Department worked on numerous infrastructure projects to improve the village's storm sewer system. The village's contractor has completed the lining of one thousand two hundred and sixty lineal feet of storm sewer under Jacobson Avenue. This should give the existing storm sewer an extra fifty years of life. The division provided contract supervision and construction observation for large projects. One such project was the two thousand twenty-three MFT Road Program that included the reconstruction of thirteen streets at a total cost of approximately four point six million dollars. The department was awarded substantial funding for a bicycle and pedestrian feasibility study in the village from the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, or CMAP. CMAP has provided technical consultants to prepare a bicycle and pedestrian plan. This could lead to further projects and grants to create safe bike and pedestrian routes in the village and potentially connect to regional bike routes. Public Works has completed the design of the resurfacing of Fullerton Avenue from Bloomingdale to Schmal Road. The village was awarded a federal Surface Transportation Program, or STP, grant for this project. The total cost for this project is one point seven million dollars, with nine hundred thousand coming from the federal grant and the village contributing eight hundred thousand. Construction is expected to start the spring of two thousand twenty-four. The village's wastewater treatment plant, or WWTP, processed over one billion gallons of wastewater this year within IEPA guidelines and regulations. This total discharge is similar to last year's one point two billion gallons the plant processed. Capital improvements continued at the wastewater treatment plant with the second phase of projects for the removal of phosphorus from the wastewater. The first phase included rehabilitating digester number two, which began in August of two thousand twenty-one and was completed in two thousand twenty-three. The second phase includes modifications to existing aeration basins by adding separate zones needed for the biological removal of phosphorus. This project also includes the rehabilitation of digester number one to help optimize the plant's sludge processing. The village continued its commitment to improving water and sewer infrastructure in two thousand twenty-three with the replacement of approximately four thousand feet of water main, rehabilitation to the village's oldest water pumping station, rehabilitation of the West Burdette Elevated Water Tower, retrofit Mill Pond Lift Station, and sanitary sewer repairs in the North Avenue catchment area. Fleets was able to save the village approximately ten thousand dollars by completing a fabrication to the K nine unit vehicle. Our oldest cat backhoe needed to be repaired, which we were able to accomplish in-house, saving the village five thousand dollars in labor costs. Public Works has taken delivery of a two thousand twenty-three Peterbilt Aerial Man Lift Truck, which is the seventh Peterbilt truck in the fleet. Over the last year, Fleets has completed six hundred and seventy-six preventative measures and seven hundred and forty-seven corrective measures. In-house repairs and maintenance by our highly trained mechanics enable quick turnaround and much lower costs. The Recreation Division offers a wide variety of programs for all age groups from tiny tots to adults. The department strives to provide activities, programs, and events that are affordable, fun, and engaging in a safe environment. Program and event information can be found at www.ghrec.org and in the activity guide that is mailed in May, August, and December. The Path Summer Camp program had six hundred and eighty-eight enrollments over the summer. Campers enjoyed arts and crafts, movie days, athletic activities, games, swimming at GH two O, and weekly field trips. Throughout two thousand twenty-three, youth athletic programs continued to see an increase in participation. Youth leagues experienced an overall growth of forty-eight percent with over one thousand and eighty-five participants. We're excited to offer new youth athletic programs in two thousand twenty-four, which include track and field, beginning golf, flag football fueled by USA football, and my first T-ball. In two thousand twenty-three, the Recreation Division added Movies and Concerts in the Park to the special event offerings. Our summer concert series was a huge success with a variety of music offered all summer long. We look forward to bringing back our Concert in the Park series in two thousand twenty-four. The gym floor at the Sports Hub was refinished in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. Included with the refinishing were the addition of lines for both basketball and pickleball. The hub offers pickleball on weekdays from nine AM to one PM. The Center for Senior Citizens was renamed in September to honor the late village president Linda Jackson. The newly named Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens took her vision to build a space to allow senior residents a place to thrive in the community. The center received over eight thousand member visits in two thousand twenty-three while exploring multiple new programs in fitness, travel opportunities, educational seminars, arts and crafts, and more. The center also broke ground on an expansion project partially funded by a DCEO grant in two thousand twenty-three. The much-needed space will be used to expand the medical lending closet program, office space, and safer areas to store various center equipment. In the fall of two thousand twenty-three, the turf field project began at Camera Park. This field change will convert the camera-lighted soccer field to artificial turf. This field will assure that recreation participants and public members can have a field that is playable in all weather conditions with minimal wear. This project is expected to be completed in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. In addition to the turf soccer field, infield work was completed at both the Nazos Park Baseball Diamonds. Regrading, replacing material, and improving the fence areas of each of these ball diamonds should offer players at Nazos Park quality baseball diamonds for many years to come. Golf continues to thrive at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club with over twenty-five thousand rounds of golf in two thousand twenty-three. The Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic was held on Friday, August twenty-fifth, and raised eighteen thousand dollars for six worthwhile charities. The charities included the Northern Illinois Food Bank, Family and Faith Food Pantry, the Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program, the FOP Lodge Number Fifty-two Community Enrichment Fund, the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund, and the Glendale Heights Foundation. Several projects and purchases were completed in two thousand twenty-three at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. A new fleet of seventy-seven golf carts arrived in May with new energy-efficient batteries. Bunker work was also continued on the golf course at two large fairway bunkers. The large fairway bunker at hole number one and hole number nine was completed, as well as the large fairway bunkers on hole number eleven were converted from sand to grass. This work was completed in the fall with both being ready for grass seed in the spring. The village of Glendale Heights continues to progress in a positive direction. The future is truly bright as we have achieved so much as a community while overcoming everyday challenges. The collaborative efforts of our community members, village staff, local businesses, committees, commissions, and volunteers will continue to be the driving force for this village. With a shared vision and collective determination, we can all look forward to a future filled with community pride. We encourage all of you to get involved this year. Volunteer, join our team, and make a difference in our community. Please do not hesitate to contact any of our village board members or any of our qualified staff if you have any questions, comments, or concerns about the village. Thank you for believing in us to serve you, the residents of the village of Glendale Heights.
Public discussion of Glendale Heights. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anybody from public? You have the concert agenda before you put acting village administrator Tom Flint, please read the concert agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Three, approval of the council payable listing on March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, with the amount of three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars eighty-eight cents. Four, resolution authorizing execution of change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrades project in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Five, resolution to approve and adopt two thousand twenty-four zoning map for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, resolution approving authorized execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, County DuPage, Illinois, for the Fullerton Avenue resurfacing project. Seven, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award and authorizing execution of a contract for the purchase of police uniforms. Eight, resolution authorizing execution of a contract with water resources for the antenna relocation and temporary water tower at the West Burdette Elevated Water Storage Tank. Nine, resolution authorizing execution of a contract with Play Illinois LLC for the Millennium Park Improvement Project. Ten, motion to approve pay request number two to DCG Roofing Solutions for the wastewater treatment plant roof replacement project, total amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Eleven, motion to approve pay request number three to Construction Inc. for the senior center renovation project, total amount not to exceed forty thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Twelve is approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve concert agenda? Trustee Schmidt.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Pojak. Second, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business is none. New business, a motion to waive first reading on new business item two through five. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two, three, four, and five? So moved, trustee Siddiki.
Second.
Trustee Schroder. Okay, discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two through five is approved. Number two, ordinance to waive bid and accept the proposal of Schroder and Schroder Incorporated for the two thousand twenty-four sidewalk removal and replacement program and authorize the execution of contract by and between Schroder and Schroder Incorporated and the village of Glendale Heights. First reading is waived. This ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen? Trustee Schroder.
Yes, so moved.
Second, trustee Schmidt.
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen is approved. Number three, an ordinance approving amendments to the operations policy manual of the village of Glendale Heights, first reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen? Trustee Schroder and trustee Pojak. So moved. Discussion?
Was there a second?
Second.
Mary?
Trustee Paul, first and second. Discussion? None. The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen is approved.
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
There is no, yeah, there is no vote. There was a first and a second, no vote.
It's okay.
No, you gotta take a vote.
Yeah, take.
Oh, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Uh, yes. The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fifteen is approved. Number four, an ordinance repealing ordinance number, uh, uh, number twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven and authorizing the issuance of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase of one pit, uh, pitor-built single axle dump truck with snowplow and salting equipment. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Schroder. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash sixteen is approved. Number five, an ordinance to amend section eleven dash two dash two entitled definitions of chapter two entitled rules and definitions of title eleven entitled zoning regulations of the village code of the Village of Glendale Heights, LNI. First reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second, any second motion?
Second.
Trustee Siddiki, second. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventeen is approved. Number six, an ordinance reserving and authorizing the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activities bond issues and related matters. First reading. Next, is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board meeting on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? None. We have no executive session. I need motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Pat, second. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Light, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
Trustee Maritato.
No, I got it today.
Light.
All right, um, welcome to committee hall meeting, uh, for March seventh, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Clark, can you please take out who's here?
Noted.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions? Okay, nothing on that. All right, we'll go right to reports. This is something new. I'm gonna ask if any committee member of any of our committees for Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee, Historical Committee, Ordnance Committee, Parks and Recreation Committee, Property Enhancement Committee, and Senior Citizen Advisory Committee have any reports or any updates they would like to give.
So if you could just go down the list there, trustee Light.
Okay, I'm gonna start one at a time. I'm gonna take the first one. We're gonna do that. Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee, is there any?
There's no report.
No reports. Uh, next one, Historical Committee. That is my committee. All I wanna do is report that we'll have open houses for the summer and looking into a possibility for expanding some of the, um, ongoing events there at the, uh, the historic house. So if you get a chance, please come on up, take a look on Saturday. Still be doc, uh, posted on the dates that we have open houses. Uh, Ordnance Committee.
No report.
No report. Parks and Recreation Committee.
Uh, I do, I do have a report for that, Mike.
Okay.
Uh, our last meeting, we had a lot of issues going on and we approved a lot of issues and Keith, uh, you take it from there.
Well, thank you. Um, at the, uh, meeting that we had last week, we had a special meeting in the Parks and Rec Committee to get a few things, um, addressed by the committee. Uh, Monian Park, which was earlier discussed and passed by the board. Uh, we did some rate work, which will come back before you at the next meeting. Um, but one of the biggest things, and one of the things I was gonna add to the agenda and is a part of what I'm looking for tonight, is hopefully approval like the Parks and Rec Committee did, is our conceptual plan for the community garden. Uh, for those of you that don't know in the public, the community garden has been a subject at the village board level for a number of years, and we are finally ready to get our plans ready to go. Um, the, the community garden, uh, was put together in collaboration with Hitchcock Design Group, who came up with the general layout that's there. Um, I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Committee for approving this and also for the new, uh, garden club that has been meeting. They've also gone through this, have offered a number of suggestions and, um, additions to this plan, which we have implemented to make sure that those gardeners out there get a lot of what they need so that this is a successful area. One of the biggest, um, discussion points was the cost of this, and we've been talking about the cost of this. And I believe at one point somebody brought up the number that it was like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars was what we were looking at. Um, the current conceptual plan that we have listed here, um, takes that cost down to somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. The work on this project will be done in-house by staff. Um, and it includes a number of different amenities, including raised planer beds. Um, it has fourteen different water barrels. There'll probably be more by the time we get to the end of this. Um, it has different sized plots, and our plan is to, um, this is strictly conceptual right now. The next step is if you accept the conceptual plan this evening, we will go and have Hitchcock Design, uh, put the plans together for us. Um, we expect those plans very quickly. It's not a huge project at this point to put together, and we have hope that we can start doing our part staff-wise to get this built and have some sort of community garden still this spring. So, um, I'm open to any questions you might have, but, uh, the obvious goal is to get some sort of approval.
Uh, where it's located?
Uh, this, I'm sorry, I forgot the most obvious thing. It's a college park.
Okay. Right next to Chester. Chester?
I just got one more thing to say, Mike.
Sure.
I wanna thank the, uh, park committee. I think they did a great job. I'm not taking any credit for this because they did a lot of work. Uh, we cut it down from two hundred thousand to sixty thousand. And I'm just hoping that the board approves this so we can get it, uh, so we can get it going.
When, when are you looking for approval? Right now?
Uh, if you, uh, are accepting of this proposal, the actual contract to, to, uh, get the plans made is at a minimal cost. It'll be something that we can implement right away and get started.
So do we need, Pat, are you gonna motion this?
There's no, there's no motion needed. There's no vote unless somebody has an objection that they wanna voice. He, he has direction to proceed.
No objection.
It's not listed as an agenda item. We can't take a vote.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Nope, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we're good.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Yeah, Keith.
Uh, Property Enhancement Committee.
Okay, I'll take that. Uh, um, uh, February twenty-eighth, we had a meeting. Tom Byaus and Steve Kalish did a presentation on stormwater management. Uh, opened some eyes on the, the committee, uh, particularly in the amount of floodplain that, uh, is actually located within the village. And the fact that, uh, a large portion of the village is drained by swales and not storm, dedicated storm sores. So, uh, some of the members were interested in finding out whether there was any program from the village to, uh, assist people who bought property where swales had been filled in over the, the past years. Unfortunately, we don't have anything of that nature, but we would like to consider that at a future date. A couple of members brought up, uh, issues where garbage and building materials are viewed dumped on private property. Uh, ComDev will be looking into that. And we also got a pat on the back for the ComDev Department from one of the managers from, uh, one of the large, uh, housing complexes here. Uh, the good work that, uh, Steve Kalish has done helping her out, uh, with some issues she's had. So basically, that's it.
Oh, a lot of good work. Perfect, thank you. Um, all right, on to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
No comment.
No comment, no report. All right, we got you. All right, uh, next thing, we're gonna go on to public comments of, uh, committee recommendations. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on a committee recommendation only? Don't jump at once. Okay. All right, next one, committee recommendations. This, Tika, this is for committee recommendations.
Well, I think.
Not yet, Tika.
No, 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 I have a committee recommendation.
Okay.
I have a recommendation that the committees that exist, I'm Martika King. I'm Martika King, resident of Glendale Heights, seventeen years, mental health counselor, open woman. I have a recommendation that the committees that exist, work together and create a system that's more user-friendly to the people of the village so we can participate in this process. We have, we sit here during these meetings, usually not very many. This is astonishing crowd. Um, and we need, the people need to lead, guide, and hold accountable the representatives of our town, you know? God bless you. You're here. I get it. And you're great in so many ways. All of you in different ways are great, including. Um, it is true. Um, what has been missing has been the people to, uh, kind of give, give you some feedback. I can't even follow what I'm listening to.
Tika, we have done some really hard work with.
God bless you. I know. I'll see you later.
We love, we love hearing from you. Thank you. Okay.
You got another one, Mike?
Oh.
At Pope Wayne Avenue. I saved you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks.
Uh, Keith, questions for you. You're coming in substantially under budget for the community garden, but you're leaving a lot of money on the table. Why aren't you, why aren't you using it to, you know, there was that big, all that money that was from, uh, a grant, something utility, electrical, something. You're coming in substantially under budget, so what happens to rest of that money or why aren't we putting it into the garden?
So the garden proposal that we put together actually has the things that we talked about that are what the garden needs. Um, I think that what that money is gonna be spent is really up to the board. And I have a preliminary estimate. It's sixty. It might be fifty-eight. It might be sixty-four. They'll, they'll hear that as we come through, but there is money left.
I mean, it's a lot of money. Wasn't it over a hundred thousand?
It was around a hundred.
Right.
They're gonna need some of that to balance for upkeep throughout the years. It's like putting the money in a bank. If you need it for upkeep, maybe new, um, expansion or whatever.
Would the grant allow for that?
It's, the money's there.
Okay, I just, you know, we had talked about, you know, yeah, as you said, this has been in the plan for years. I just don't wanna see it cheaped out. And, you know, and we've looked at dozens of them in other communities, and some of them look horrible and some of them look extreme. Hopefully, we'll fall in the middle somewhere.
I think that the plan that we are gonna end up with will get us right to where we thought we would be.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, Mary, what do you got?
Keith, who's gonna maintain this garden?
So the gardens are maintained, um, by the people who rent them.
By the people who rent them.
Yep, and then if they don't maintain them properly, we have rules in place that would allow us to come in and take care of them so that there's not an eyesore in the area.
All right. Um, any other public comment on committee recommendations?
I have one suggestion. Since you, if you have money, uh, why don't you, you know, give, uh, plans free to people who has, you know, at their home, at their backyard, they can grow, you know, maybe you have some kind of a program for that, like, you know?
Uh, we can certainly discuss that. That'd be a great topic for the garden club, so I will.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there will be a lot of elderly people who don't wanna come to the garden. Instead, they wanna grow something, uh, at their backyard, so we should help them. Yeah, so maybe, you know, look at that.
All right. All right, let's, uh, I guess we'll go on to committee recommendations. Um, number one, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow outdoor storage in an eye-light industrial district for Indell LLC doing business as Webster slash Hoff Corporation located at seven oh four East Fullerton Avenue. Do we have a motion from the board? Bill?
I move that we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second. Second, Mohammed, discussion?
So this is a conditional use, um, as mentioned, to permit outdoor storage of an above-ground tank. It's the second tank on this property. So there's already one of similar size, uh, on this property, and it moves forward without variation.
Is this just for an expansion for business is what it is, or is it another product that they're doing?
No, this, the, the first tank is being decommissioned. This is a tank to take over the decommissioned tank.
Got it. Okay. Any other discussion? Nope. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
All right. Number two, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation. A recommendation to approve an application for a conditional use to allow congregant housing facility for DuPage County Health Department located at seven four three Lippert Lane. Phil?
Move that we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second. Second.
Second.
Mohammed. Um, discussion?
So the DuPage County Health Department, um, manages these congregant housing facilities. There's two light facilities in this village already immediately to the east. This would be the third one of its kind.
And helpful for sure. Any other discussion? None? Roll call vote.
Trustee Siddiki.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Maritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries and be moved to the board with a recommendation to concur. All right, number three, an amendment to Title Administration, Chapters fourteen annexation and fifteen land use fees, Title seven zoning, Chapter three administrative and enforcement, and thirteen planned unit development, and Title twelve subdivision, Chapter three, as it pertains to the fee schedule and structure for land planning and land use process, administration by village zoning administrator or their designing. Is there a motion to concur? We'll move it to the board. Phil?
Move that we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
We have a second.
Second.
Second, Chester. Thank you. Discussion.
So could you give some tips, yeah?
There's a lot to put out.
There, there, there's a lot here. So, uh, what this is, is this, this is effectively a mechanism for us to allow the removal of taking escrow deposits or cash deposits for zoning and land use processes that we currently facilitate. So, uh, the current process is when, when you have a project that needs to go before a plan commission. Um, you, you need to put monies down to facilitate that public process. And oftentimes, it needs to go through the attorneys, potentially through the engineers, and so we encumber as a village third-party costs to facilitate these processes. And, uh, the, the department and, and working with the finance department is moving towards eliminating this cash escrow, uh, mechanism because the, the mechanism itself presents budgetary and accounting challenges, and also encumbers a lot of administrative costs from a personnel perspective. And so, what we're doing is we're revising the land use and the zoning fee schedules to both allow for removal of these escrow deposits, as well as bring us in line with the actual costs we encumber for third-party services and our staff time.
Well, that's actually, all right, any other discussion? So, discussion, all right, roll call vote.
Trustee Meritado?
Yes.
Mayor Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
All right, then, move it to the board with a recommendation concur. All right, that was easy. All right, next one, discussion regarding term limits. No discussion on that? Okay. Moving on, then. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on village-related items? Could you just state your name and town you live in?
Yes, my name is Nancy Roberts, and I live in Wheaton, Illinois.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi.
Mr. Light, can you mention?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It is a three-minute limit on the conversation tonight for comments.
Okay.
And it is comments. Thank you.
Okay, well, what I'd like to pre-address this evening is the situation in Gaza. References to Israel's five-month, US-funded assault on the population of Gaza are commonly introduced with a reference to the brutal attack of October 7, or some such description, thus framing Israel's response as one of self-defense, a right which, under international law, does not apply to a belligerent occupying power with respect to an occupied population. In this context, it would be well to listen to the words of W.H. Auden, who wrote, "Those to whom evil is done do evil in return." The attack of October 7, however brutal, must be seen against the backdrop of the cumulative brutality the state of Israel has carried out against the people of Palestine for the last seventy-five years, through illegal occupation, land theft, ethnic cleansing, house demolitions, bombing campaigns with huge civilian death tolls, targeted assassinations, arrests and detentions of Palestinians without charge or trial, including that of children, torture, restrictions on movement, an apartheid legal system, and a brutal, illegal seventeen-year siege of Gaza since 2007. The crimes committed on October 7 pale by comparison with the scale and savagery of the onslaught Israel has unleashed since that day against Gaza's entire population. Through massive and systematic destruction of civilian infrastructure, from homes to libraries, archives, mosques, churches, schools, universities, hospitals, bakeries, sewage treatment plants, power plants, this maniacal assault has rendered Gaza unlivable, and Gaza's existence a living hell. Nearly all of Gaza's population of 2.3 million have been displaced, while 100,000 civilians are dead, wounded, maimed, or missing under the rubble. Now, Gazans have begun dying of starvation, dehydration, and disease, while Israel systematically blocks desperately needed life-saving aid. People are being shot to death for the crimes of scavenging for food, waiting for an aid truck, attempting to flee to safety, or trying to return to their destroyed homes. This is nothing short of barbarism, being cheered on by a genocidal Israeli public. Through our unconditional support of Israelis, Israel's genocidal war on Gaza, we are in violation of numerous laws. The Foreign Assistance Act of 1961, the Arms Export Control Act of 1976, the U.S. War Crimes Act of 1995, 1996, the Lehi Law of 1997, and the Genocide Convention of 1948. In the words of Ralph Nader, we are the arch-enabler of this massive slaughter in Gaza. Therefore, I am coming before you to ask you to do your moral and legal duty to stand with the Palestinian people by passing a resolution calling for an immediate, unconditional ceasefire, the entry of full humanitarian aid, the release of both Israeli and Palestinian hostages, and a political solution that grants the Palestinians their long-denied right to dignity, freedom, and self-determination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Time is up. I have a quick question for everybody on this subject. How many people here are actually wanting to address the Gaza ongoing situation? Can I see, show of hands? Okay. I know this doesn't have a lot to do with village business. We try and pertain to village business, what does for our village, our business itself. We can, maybe a few more people, we'll let them, we'll hear it out, 'cause we do have time constraints, and we have staff that are on overtime and stuff like that, so...
We could also duly note that people are here to protest, and we don't, we could consider this not public business and move on to public business.
So, I have a question. So, after they are done, can we bring the resolution? Or can we, you know, ask for the resolution to...
It's not village business, nor would be probably appropriate.
No, but if the public demands it, why not? I mean, it's not the, you know, but this is something for peace. So, why not we, as a trustee, I think I can...
That's a board decision, correct?
Yeah, so I can bring it, and then the board can decide, correct?
So, we can go ahead with a couple more comments? Go ahead, please, go ahead. We have three minutes, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Hello, trustees, residents of Glendale Heights, and board members.
What's your name and where do you live?
My name is Fahim Begh, I live in Glendale Heights. I've been here about three years. And I would like to ask for the board and trustees to call for a non-binding resolution of a permanent bilateral ceasefire and return of all hostages from both sides of the conflict in Hamas and Israel, as well, and of Hamas and Israel, and as well as ample humanitarian and medical aid for Gazans who are starving to death. This resolution being non-binding means that it's legally unenforceable, and thus, there's no liability on the village for calling for this resolution. On the other hand, the resolution is a clear exercise of democratic rights and freedom of speech of the residents, village, of the village, the trustees and board members for the purpose of human rights, dignity, and diplomacy, because violence is never the answer. You would be joining at least twenty-two American cities, towns, and villages across the United States, including San Francisco, Minneapolis, Atlanta, our very own Chicago, and Bolingbrook, as well as over 150 countries who have voted in favor of enforceable resolutions in the UN, but of which the United States has vetoed every single one of them. What I would like to say is that unfortunately, America in this scenario is, because of its leadership under President Biden, has been incredibly lacking in moral action, incredibly dismissive and inhumane in rhetoric, and is on the wrong side of history. At this point, the Israeli army shows no plan, no exit, no end in sight under international law, and their goal of eliminating Hamas would be a fantasy. On the other hand, what has been spoke, and also what has been spoken of by Israeli leaders and military, as well as many U.S. lawmakers, has included clear intent of genocide and ethnic cleansing that is proven by their actions and that is being investigated in the International Court of Justice right now. With these stances, America does not strengthen itself, nor Israel, and greatly compromises its position in the world and the eyes of all who are watching. From America's side, we have not did enough to stop a preventable humanitarian disaster imposed by Israel, where children are dying of starvation as we speak. America must call for a permanent ceasefire, return of all hostages, restoration of aid to UNRWA, provision of rebuilding aid for Gaza, and ceasing unquestioned provisions of military aid, of military funding, and weapons to Israel. I call upon the trustees and board of the Village of Glendale Heights to bring forth and vote positively towards this non-binding resolution for peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If we can, we'll go two more, if we can maybe get... We'll go two more, please. Oh, Mike, well...
Mine will be a little bit less intensive.
Okay.
My name is Michael Anoveros, I'm a resident of Glendale Heights. I want to make it clear, what I'm about to say are my words, my beliefs, and not in any way are affiliated with the Village of Glendale Heights or the board of trustees before me. As a concerned global citizen, I'm speaking to you, Israel and Hamas, with a deep sense of urgency and empathy, appealing for the immediate ceasefire in the ongoing conflict that has inflicted immeasurable suffering on innocent civilians. The devastating impact of war transcends borders, affecting lives, families, and communities. The human toll is heart-wrenching, with over 30,000 lives lost, homes destroyed, and futures shattered. It is evident that the continuation of hostilities only exasperates the humanitarian crisis, leaving scars that may take generations to heal. I implore all parties involved to prioritize dialogue and diplomacy over violence, recognizing the shared humanity that unites us all. A ceasefire would provide a crucial opportunity for humanitarian aid to reach those in desperate need, allowing medical assistance, food, and shelter to reach the affected populations. History has shown us that lasting solutions can only emerge through peaceful dialogue and mutual understanding. A ceasefire will create an environment conducive to meaningful negotiations where longstanding grievances can be addressed in a constructive and sustainable manner. I appeal to your sense of compassion, wisdom, and leadership to consider the broader implications of continued conflict. The United States of America, the United States of America, and the international community around the world are ready to support peaceful resolutions and contribute to rebuilding shattered communities. Let us stand united in our commitment to peace, recognizing that through these collaborations and understanding, that we can build a better future for all. The world is watching, and decisions made today will shape the legacy we leave for generations to come. May reason prevail, and may we collectively strive for a world where dialogue triumphs over discord and humanity prevails over conflict. Thank you.
As you know, I'm Martika, I'm changing the subject, actually. What I came to talk about was education. And recently got, maybe many villagers did, the Glenbard Township High School district newsletter, and really liked the, the idea on the back page of the newsletter to be mentors for the local businesses, and even the village, it would be wonderful, you know, why not? In the village as well, you know, to be, and business people in Glendale Heights, you know, to have mentors from the school, from the high school. It would help them, it gives them college credits. Not that I'm thinking college is such a great idea these days, I'm really not, because of many reasons, it's people that watch True News. But anyway, God bless you all, and that's all I can say.
Thank you, Tika.
My name is Amir Heather, I am living for Glendale Heights seventeen years. I have a question, all board members, including Mayor Koker Chadri. My question is, why you guys close the cricket field? Anybody ask?
This is trustee question, you know, trustee can answer.
Yes. But other game is open. Basketball is open, golf is open, and soccer is open. This is discommunication, right? Discommunicate the Asian people. This game is only for seventy-five percent, playing for Asian people, kids is everybody. My question is, where I go, my kids is play the cricket. I taxpayer, everything, living seventeen years in Glendale Heights. Anybody ask my question? The board member? Trustees?
No. Amir, thank you.
So, this is a discommunication, you guys accept? Discommunicate the Asian people. This game is Asian people.
This is for, this is for public comment, Amir.
I am the, I am the public.
No, I thank you.
I am the public.
I know, thank you.
I'm not a trustee and anything, I am the public.
Thank you.
This is my question. You guys give me answer.
Sir, what the chairman is trying to tell you is this is for public comment. It's not question and answer.
I am the public.
Correct, and you're making your comments.
I don't have any, like, trustee and mayor and others, I never come from the other city. I living for Glendale Heights seventeen years, I am the taxpayer. What about the taxpayer mean? I pay the water bill, I pay the gas bill, I pay the electric bill. This is my right.
Mr. Heather, you make and off, you know, it's not question, answer, time, it's just comments.
What time, what time?
My answer is trustee have power, they can do whatever they want. I have no say.
What time, you guys give me a time, I come sitting with them.
You can call, you know, and then call me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and just town you live in.
Hello, everyone, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Adio Malik, I'm a resident of Lombard for about, over a year, but I've been in Chicago for about a little over three years.
Thank you, Adio.
Yeah, of course. So, I've been a human being since 1993. I can eat food, drink water, sleep, breathe. Unfortunately, I can't say the same for the people of Palestine, who are literally fighting for their lives every day. I'm here today to tell you that what's happening overseas is a humanitarian crisis. It has nothing to do with race, ethnicity, politics, or anything. It's about human life. We're talking human beings, just like you, just like me, just like everyone here. We're human beings, right?
Adio, go ahead. Can we have quiet in the back there while Adio speaks, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here today to tell you that there are human beings that are suffering overseas right now. I process things very logically, and I'm a very logical person. So, if I see and hear that innocent men, women, and children are being killed, shouldn't we stand up and do what's right? We're human beings, we should have a moral standard. There are innocent children who are dying. Shouldn't we stand up and do what's right? If we know that our hard-earned tax money is being sent to a country that's funding genocide, shouldn't we stand up and do what's right? Speak out against that? Some of you, and even the people, some of the people behind me think that, yes, this is not a village issue. Since when does humanity live in, not an issue for everyone? We're all human beings. So, I have two requests for you all today. My first request is that you, at the very least, put this issue on the agenda so at least you guys can talk about and discuss it. That's at the very least. There's other ways to resolve war than just killing each other. And that's what's happening right now. My second issue is empathize with the people of Palestine, social compassion. They're human beings, they bleed just like me and you. They breathe the same air, just like me and you. The only difference is that they're not from America, they're not the same skin color, maybe. But who cares? They're human beings. Stand up for what's right. You just made us say the Pledge of Allegiance, right? The beginning of when we started this whole thing. Justice for all, right? Where's the justice for Palestinians? Thank you.
What's your name?
Thank you, Adio.
Adio Malik.
What?
Thank you.
Adio, do you live in Glendale Heights?
Lombard.
I live in Lombard, I live in Lombard, yes.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do you participate in village meeting of Lombard?
I've been to Villa Park, and I've been to Naperville. I haven't been to Lombard one yet. So, thank you.
All right, can we have one more on the Gaza gassing? Go ahead. Thank you. If you'd like to join in with the photographs, feel free to join up there with, and let him speak. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dan Bailey, and right now I live in Wheaton, but I did live in Glendale Heights on Fullerton, over the Spanish courts, for a while. And I don't have anything, it's quite... And I don't have anything as quite as elaborate or as profound as what other people have said. But I would like to say this, that, um, I'm an American of Irish heritage. And like the people of the country from which I came, or from which my great-great-great-grandfather came and my other ancestors came, I stand with the people of Palestine. For their right to life, liberty, happiness, et cetera. Their right to live as a human beings. And I stand against the, um, the project that took their land from them. They did not cause the Holocaust. A bunch of Europeans killed another bunch of Europeans in Europe. And because of that, people were sent to Palestine to take over that land from those people. It was their land. And they took it from them in some kind of a settler colonial project, genocide, ethnic cleansing right now. This is not, it's not okay. And like the people of Ireland or some of the strongest supporters of the Palestinian people, I want to ask if we stand for those people like the people of Ireland have. The people of Ireland having had, uh, that kind of colonial project first happened against them. And then the British took it to Palestine and did it there. And we now we're helping. This is be like, like, if in the nineteen, late nineteen thirties, if we were giving aid to the people in the death camps, that'd be something similar. It'd just be like, I just don't understand how America can be helping to do this kind of thing to people. So I pray that you consider this and give a push to get the leaders of our country moving in the right direction to uphold American values. And stand with other people who are like us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, as far as Gaza, the park goes, we're going to go ahead. We're going to continue with village business-related stuff, so if we can. Anybody that pertaining with village business questions? Marietta, you got village business?
No, sir. I'd like to continue.
Sir, the chairman has ruled that that is not village business. We're continuing on the villages. This is the chairman of this particular meeting.
We need to continue with, like, right now at this point in time.
Can't receive vote on this, you know, if they can't.
I think we are, what, why not be? Yeah, so I want to bring the motion on the table for the ceasefire. And so we can have this on our next committee on the whole, so we can have our discussion on that. So let's bring that motion to that on the next committee on the whole. And we can talk more about that, about that. Then you guys can, you know, come in the next one and you can.
I'm giving you a different perspective than others, I just.
No.
I agree with Mohammed. We can talk about this at a later date. Tonight, we need to continue. You're more than welcome to come back at the next meeting for Committee of Hall.
Actually, let me tell you how it works. So basically, this is, you guys, you know, talk about it. You want a resolution. So the resolution has to be sponsored by one of the trustees. So I sponsored it. It's going to be coming in the next board meeting, in the committee on the whole. That's where the discussion really takes place. Because then we have a resolution, then we have a ceasefire resolution, where you guys can talk more.
That's one more month from today?
Correct.
Not one more month. It's, we have a next board meeting. It's the third of Thursday. Third of the Thursday of the month. So first month, first, and then the third. That's our board meetings are. We have two board meetings per month. First Thursday and the third Thursday of every month.
Given the great crisis going on right now, is there any way we can expedite this?
Twenty-first.
Trustee, let me see, please.
The earliest you can do is twenty-first.
Chairman wanted to start it. Trustee have right to vote if they can continue, you know. These people came, you know. Trustee have right, you know, so I will go for vote for trustee, you know.
You can make a motion then, if you want to try that. And we'll see what kind of vote we have. You continue with two more people that are speaking. Well, go ahead. Do we have a, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
Excuse me, Mike, who made the motion?
The mayor made the motion. Mohammed made the second. So let two more speakers speak.
Okay.
Do we have, you want to roll call here, or should we just do?
It would be a roll call. Well, but it can't be two more people. Either it's going to be people get to speak, or nobody gets to speak. I can't, we can't cut that. We can't divide. We can't say how many people. It's either you're going to allow them to talk on the topic, or you're not going to allow them to talk.
All right, then we'll have to postpone it till the, what was it, twenty-first then? All right, then, we have motion, we have a second. We need to roll vote then for speaking the rest of the time. On the Gaza.
To abstain.
What is the motion?
Do you allow speakers to continue? Abstain for Pat.
Trustee Pochek?
No. Abstain.
Abstain or no, it makes a difference.
No, I'm sorry, abstain then. Mary?
I will abstain.
Bill?
Abstain.
Sorry, I'm trying to write all this down.
No, it's okay. I'm helping you. Mohammed?
Yes.
And I shall abstain.
Mary, you get a vote.
You vote, mayor.
I vote, I don't make no difference.
Well, you just want to put it on the record.
Yes.
All right, so being only two votes to continue this topic of discussion, which is not public business, it fails, so no one else is allowed to talk.
Okay. Then we'll go on with public business of Glendale Heights. Do we have anyone in the pocket that wishes to, Mary, go ahead.
Good evening.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, or not questions, but things I'd like the board and the administration to consider. As I have been discussing over the few years, that a lot of the homes of rental properties, I live in a duplex, the duplex next to me has gone rental. We got a new person move in the other night, and he parked right on the wrong side of the street in front of the, um, the, the no parking sign and the fire hydrant. So I stopped him, and I said, hey, you know what? And now every single time someone moves into this house, I'm the one that tells them. And, you know, you can't park here, you can't park in front of the sign, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I would like the village to consider some kind of communication with these landlords to ensure that their people who are renting their properties understand the guidelines and the rules of the village. I tried to explain to this gentleman that you can't park there. And he said, well, this is my house. I said, yeah, that's my house too. But you can't park in front of a fire hydrant. You can't park on this side of the street going the wrong direction. So I don't know if there's something the village can do to ensure that these landlords abide by our rules and get their tenants to understand the rules.
I would say you just call the police department. Don't get a hold of these people and then give them a ticket.
But Chester, I'm always calling the police department, and I am tired of it. There's no reason why I should be trying to keep the rules of the village when the village should be doing something proactively. So I, as a resident, am not always policing what goes on on my street.
Chief, can you get some extra patrol over there?
Yeah, but I think what she's saying is throughout the community. I think she's looking more for our landlord program where people who own properties and rent them out, they want some, she wants some literature or some information going out there that they can give to their tenants. I think that's what she's looking for.
Thank you.
The rules of the road, you can't park fifteen feet from a fire hydrant. People know that. If it says no parking, you can't park there. Right, Mike? Pat, go ahead.
Is there a way that we could contact the owners that own these rentals? And send them a notice?
We can. We don't always necessarily have immediate access to them, but we can contact them. I will suggest there might be practical limitations to what we can do. We can provide them materials, but their willingness to get their tenants to comply, your mileage may vary, no pun intended, so.
Yeah, but I mean, if, uh, if we give them enough warnings, can we ticket them? Because by me, that, by me, I mean, if the landlords are, you know, if the tenants are giving me problems, I mean, we write them a ticket, and then if they don't, do we give a warning ticket? Then after that, they get a ticket that they have to pay.
Can I interject real quick? There's a, this is beyond the village of Glendale Heights. There's state legislation out there right now that they're trying to eliminate anything that you could do to a landlord. So anybody who's listening, anybody that's in this courtroom, make sure you contact your legislators, because that, exactly what you're talking about, Pat, they're trying to eliminate that. Trying to eliminate any onus that goes on the landlord. So we do have a crime-free housing program, which you're talking about, Pat, but Illinois legislation is trying to eliminate that. So that goes beyond the village of Glendale Heights, and that's in the, I think it's the House right now.
So if I park my car by the hydrant, I don't get ticketed?
No, no, no. Pat is talking about more if he makes sure the landlord is responsible for their tenants. So that's what Pat and Marietta are talking about. The actual person themselves, when somebody commits a parking violation, she was using it as an example. It's more of, hey, is there a way that we could give information out to the tenant from the landlord saying, listen, you got to follow these rules, or, Mr. Landlord, you can be accountable? Is that what you're saying to Pat?
Oh, right. I mean, that's what's going on right now. I mean, even by me, I mean, we get the landlord, and then he gets tired, and then we give him, what, three citations? And then after that, he's got to, uh.
No, we used to do that.
We used to, right.
We don't have crime-free housing anymore.
It's a little bit different now. The, they have to come meet with me if they keep getting, we still have crime-free housing, but it's not the same program as it was like about a decade ago. Now they have to come and visit me, and then we figure out how we can make the problem not happen anymore.
And it's not going to include parking on the public street. It's, that's, the practical problem is, is that those are violations, no matter where you park, what town. They're violations of the Illinois statutes.
Well, but what I'm asking is that, you know, that we as homeowners, I own my home. Pretty soon, I'll own it completely. And the thing is, is that I understand the rules. I understand that I can't do X, Y, and Z. I understand that if I have a garage sale, I have to abide by the rules of the village. Those rental people, the people who are renting don't engage with understanding what the rules of the village are.
So you're more than just traffic or purpose?
More than just traffic. Just what are the rules?
Yeah, we might want to set something up with Mike and have a better discussion than George. Put the two of them together. Maybe we can sit down and get a better understanding together, because I've had people that have been ticketed for parking and crossing their own driveway. And it's something that you can't happen. You know, if it's not your driveway, you shouldn't cross it. So there's a lot of rules and regulations that we have to abide by to save, like your situation, parking in the wrong spot.
And like I said, he was actually had parked over the sidewalk. And he's new, so I'm not going to call the police immediately. But proactively, it would be nice if something could be done.
See something, say something. That's all I say. It helps out a lot. Does anyone else would like to address this board?
Term limits for Rebecca Tyver of Glendale Heights. I don't know where, how term limits got on here, but, this past election was the first time that we had a Pakistan mayor and a Pakistan trustee. And I'm very, was very proud of that. Just as I was proud of to work for Linda Jackson. And I was proud of working with Ben Fajardo, the first Filipino, yeah, Filipino mayor in the village of Glendale Heights. But unlike this board, they did have, well, they had disagreements, just like this board does. But they would take it to the back, and they would have their shootout sessions back in executive sessions or whatever, you know, the respect was, they wouldn't bring it out here for the public's eye. So I don't know who brought term limits up to the board for the meeting tonight, but, you know, when you have somebody that's very well and does a very good job, they deserve to be voted in again. And then you have people like others that I'm sure will never get voted in again. And it should be up to the people, not by who you think should or should have a term limit. And that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else like to address this board? Step up.
My name is Charles Wozdak. I live in Lombard. I am the owner of Schnitzel Platts Restaurant. Three weeks ago, I was here, and I spoke about Schnitzel Platts hosting the Glendale Heights Oktoberfest. Since then, I have spoken with a few trustees. Nothing really came out of it. Lately, I have heard from angry customers and angry vendors and angry singers and entertainers that Elka Inc. will be awarded this year's Oktoberfest. My question is why? It wasn't based on their merit. It wasn't based on them doing a good job last year. So why? Elka doesn't have a business in our town. They don't pay daily taxes. They don't contribute to this village. They don't. I was told last March by the Director of Parks and Recreation that it was up to the board who runs the Oktoberfest. And he doesn't make those determinations. But now, he has changed his mind, apparently, and he has awarded Elka Inc. the Oktoberfest. And for no other reason than an old friendship. Also, at that meeting, March twenty-third of last year, I was attended by myself, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Flint, Jayaz, the mayor's secretary and the Parks and Recreation Director. At that meeting, the village manager said, if Wolfgang isn't capable of doing the festival in 2024, we will reach out to you, since you have the German restaurant in town. And also said, I don't know if anybody in that patriarchy can run it like Wolfgang did. That comment led me to believe that the village manager had no confidence in Dean Tarbier or Elka Inc.'s ability to run the Oktoberfest. The main reason I believe the village needs to step in and allow Schnitzel Platts to host Oktoberfest is, since the festival has been hosted by Elka, it's been a disaster. And unfortunately for Schnitzel Platts, we have, we get blamed for all of Elka's poor performance. We get blamed for all the bad reviews, the bad messages. People come in and yell at us because of what happens at that festival. They all assume it's Schnitzel Platts. I believe the village needs to step in and fix this mistake and support one of your local restaurants. It's the right thing to do. Personal friendships do not, should not be involved in village business. I have also been told by a trustee that the food last year was absolutely horrible. Now, for seven years, Schnitzel Platts hosted that festival, and it was getting better each year. Covid came around, and then Elka took over. And Elka has done it for the last three years now, and has not been good. Schnitzel Platts will take that festival to the next level, just like we did with the restaurant. And, uh, and if I'm wrong here, seriously, if I'm wrong, I would like someone to tell me I'm wrong. I've spoken with everybody. Nobody's told me I was wrong. They all just agree.
Thank you, Chuck.
I just need the village to stop up and do the right thing.
Thank you.
Keith, who awards the board is awarding, or you are awarding?
Does anyone else would like to address this board? No? Becky, you already be done. You got one, one done. Yeah.
My name is Mohammed Choudhury. I've been visiting for Glendale Heights since nineteen twenty-one, because I play cricket and used to play that league. And, you know, we come every weekend. And sometimes we, as we do practice. What's the biggest dream of America? Medical free, and everybody have house. This is the biggest dream of America. But what are we looking right now? Those people who make this flag really high, our soldier, our police officer. And we don't have anything for their parents and, uh, mothers and anything, because they don't have enough benefits, they don't have enough funds. Our social security is not in, in the favor for us anymore, maybe it can be stopped any moment. But another thing, our elders, one of you guys, maybe don't have to, after retirement, you guys gonna move in South America, because you cannot afford this. In Chicago, to a nineteen, to a sixteen, we have eight thousand people homeless. Today, twenty-twenty-four, we have eighteen thousand people homeless. And we giving our money, ninety billion dollar, anywhere else, just think about it, ninety billion dollar divided by three hundred thousand dollar for each house. If anybody can calculate, you will be surprised how many our fellow Americans have his own home. Hope, just for nineteen billions dollar, we just giving away, and our fellow Americans filing, uh, in, uh, what they call bankruptcy for the home, because we have funds to feed somebody else, but we don't have fund to feed our own fellow Americans. I humble request, please look into that, and raise your voice, and let our leaders know good pride for millions dollar, and give them trillions dollar for no reason. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say, save America, thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have question for this Keith.
Oh, no, we, we go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Keith, who awards, uh, that Oktoberfest, you know? You are responsible, or board is responsible?
I were, I awarded it.
Uh, where is that guy, you know, come on over, can you please come over here? You told me that Keith said, you know, board does, you know. You told me that Keith told you that board is responsible to awarding summer fest event.
This is exact words, I should, March sixth, meeting, oh, Mr. Flint, and Jazz, and you. It's not up to the, or it's up to the village board, I don't make those determinations of who gets Oktoberfest. I just work with whoever, for whatever company I'm spoke.
Mr. Keith, did you give that statement, you gave?
I gave the statement that I am responsible for that, but I do make sure that the board is on board with my decision.
That is second part, first part is you said you want, not.
That wasn't, I read, I read a word for word.
He's, what he's telling, he told me same thing today, you know.
Okay.
Why you are going like this, you know?
Why am I gonna what?
Why you gave misleading statement, that you are not doing, board is doing, board is not doing.
Don't. Okay, then I gave a misleading statement. Uh, quite honestly, I had a conversation.
You did the right thing, no, you did the right thing, because you called the board, and the, and the board,
Let, let it, let him talk, let him talk, that's.
Gave you direction, and what to do.
Correct, correct. But ultimately, I made the decision.
So you are responsible, that's clear?
Okay, but that's not what you said.
All right, thank you, um.
Motion to adjourn.
I need motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Second is.
None. Motion carries on, or adjourn, thank you.